Okay, good evening. Linda, could you please give the invocation?
I'd like to share some comforting words first from a song titled "Just Be Held" by Casting Crowns. When you're tired of fighting, chained by control, there's freedom and surrender. Lay it down and let it go. Lift up your hands, lift up your eyes, and the storm is where you'll find God. If your eyes are on the storm, you'll wonder if God loves you still, but if your eyes are on the cross, you'll know God always has and always will love you, and where you are, God will hold your heart. So when you're on your knees and answers seem so far away, you're not alone. Your world's not falling apart, it's falling into place. God is on the throne. Stop holding on and just be held. In Psalms 94:18 and 19, "When I said my foot is slipping, your love, O Lord, supported me; when anxiety was great within me, your consolation brought joy to my soul." Isaiah 43:1, "Don't fear, for I have redeemed you; I have called you by name, and you are mine." Thank you, God, that you actually command us not to fear or worry. And the phrase "fear not" is used at least eighty times in the Bible, most likely because you, Father, know the enemy uses fear to decrease our hope and limit our victories. In James 5:16, it says, "The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much," which means if we are passionately praying for the success in producing a desired intended result that is right and justifiable, it will benefit us. So, Father, we passionately pray, asking you for success in implementing the right steps in moving forward in this community during COVID-19, knowing, God, that as we agree together in prayer, it will produce your desired and intended result that is right according to your word and your will, and it will benefit this community. Be carefully, trustfully, and lonely. Thank you, Lord. Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Linda. Now it is 6:06. We'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Attending in person, Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderperson's, McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Alderperson's attending remotely, Bornhamon.
Present.
Busker.
Here.
Brasshaw.
Here.
Mysick.
Here.
And Berberay.
Here.
Staff attending in person, Manager Bukas.
Here.
IT Director Kurt Setman. Clerk Anderson. IC Fire Chief Liggett. And is Chief Summers there, too?
Yes.
Yes.
I see Andrew Zepkov in the audience. Attending remotely, Director Carr.
Here.
Kapansky.
Here.
Jansen. Is absent. Hines.
Here.
Huffeins.
Here.
And Richter.
Here.
Legal counsel for the city, Aaron Zito.
Present.
And did I forget anyone this time?
If you could please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Busker.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the, um, on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Ross, seconded by Alderman Brasshaw. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye. Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
And Ross.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. It is blank. Alderperson Parker.
Yes, aye.
Now it equals eight. Thank you.
And next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on April 4th, 2020. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, is this supposed to be, isn't it May 4th, not April 4th? Or am I wrong on that?
He is right. Sorry about that.
You are correct. Thank you.
It is correct on the minutes. Oh, you're waiting for me. Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye. Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Next is public comments. I believe we have one, Madam Clerk.
This was received by email. "Good evening. My name is Carl Braun. I am troubled by the process the city has followed to fill the city manager position. The search committee met on March 16th for the first time. When they met again on April 6th, there was agreement to pursue candidates from search firms. When they met again on April 27th in executive session, it was to consider an internal candidate, Mr. Bukas. Then on May 8th was the press release announcing Mr. Bukas as the search committee's recommendation. I worked for many years as a human resources professional at Honeywell. When a critical opening occurred, which I submit this opening is, the objective was to find the very best candidate available to be considered. I understand Mr. Bukas has Freeport experience. That is of value. However, I wonder if he is the very best possible candidate for the job. Based on my experience, the search committee recommendation may have been made on the basis of expediency, because a more intensive process may have been more laborious, lasted longer, and likely been more expensive. Or maybe the recommendation might have been motivated in some way by the pandemic. I don't know the answers to any of these questions and likely never will. What I do believe is that the city manager position is critically important for all citizens of Freeport, and what seems to me like an intentional or unintentional effort to short-circuit the selection process is disturbing and possibly deleterious to the city. Thank you."
Are there any others? Then we will move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and will be acted as one motion unless there's a member of the council that would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there anything, counsel? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of: A) the approval and place-on-file the building permit report for April 2020. The City Manager Recruitment Committee minutes from March 16th. Permit fee waiver for FHN's operation room renovation at 1045 West Stevenson. We also have a permit fee waiver for FHN's cancer center prep and anti-room renovation at 1163 West Stevenson. Number five is the financial reports for general fund, library, water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer funds for April 30th, 2020. The cash and investment report for April 30th, 2020. We also have B, which is the approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $993,871.09 and the payroll period ending April 9th, 2020, in the total of $531,632.95. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor.
So moved. Seconded.
I'm not sure who those were. Can you identify that?
Bert.
No, Mysick and Berberay.
Yes. Yes.
Your Honor, I had a comment on that.
Uh, yeah, Alderman Parker.
I believe in a number C, you read the pay period ending April 9th. It should be May 9th.
Well, thank you for catching that. So, so let the record show that it is May 9th. And so we have a motion made by Alderman Mysick, seconded by Alderman Berberay, for the approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Next on the agenda is item number five, which is a proclamation concerning the class of 2020 graduations. Whereas due to the coronavirus pandemic of 2020, the 2020 graduation ceremonies, as we typically know them, will not take place. And whereas we feel that the hard work that these students have put forth deserve to be recognized. And whereas all graduating students from the city of Freeport, public and private schools, that would be attending graduation events should be acknowledged for achieving this goal. And whereas many schools are finding unique ways to recognize these milestones, to highlight the value of education, and to honor graduating students by highlighting their individual accomplishments. And whereas during this challenge, our students represent a bright future and will go forth on many different paths. And now therefore, I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the city of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, do hereby recognize the achievements of graduating members of the class of 2020, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Freeport, offer our heartfelt congratulations to those graduating students and wish them the best as they navigate to their futures. So congratulations, class of 2020. Next is item number six, which is the approval of appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read those?
We have three reappointments to the library board. All are effective until May 31st, 2023. They include Rebecca Quigle, Mark Foschi, and Alan Green.
If it's acceptable to the council, we'll just do that in one motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
And Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number seven is the second reading of ordinance 202027. Could you please read this?
Ordinance regarding no parking in alley behind police station between Cherry and Walnut, Wayne and Coates Streets.
Thank you. Director Carr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The police chief, fire chief, and myself were kind of discussing a few of the roads and some areas that we're having some real difficult getting emergency to when there's parking on both sides. Um, those that are included are Coates Street, Wayne Street. I know Coates, we've gotten some complaints even from garbage pickup that they can't get the garbage truck down there. Um, there's also a couple of lines on one of the sides. How we chose which side of the street we'd like to park in on is to make sure that we can allow the garbage haulers down the road when there's people parked. And then the alley behind the police department was pointed out by the police chief as another place where we really need to eliminate the chance of there being any kind of an accident or those potential collisions to keep anybody deliverant. To the PD, the vehicles coming out as well as any kind of an ambulance that might drop off, um, some people that are in custody at the police department there. So nothing's really changed to the ordinance since first reading. Staff would request that we do restrict the parking on the south side of Coates, south side of Wayne, and then on both sides of the alley and the police department.
Thank you, Director Carr. Any further discussion, counsel? Alderman Parker.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, was that Alderman Brasshaw?
Mysick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question to Director Carr is this, have any of the constituents, that is, the residents in the neighborhood, been contacted regarding these parking restrictions yet?
No, they have not.
Um, follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, will you be contacting them if the council so moves to pass this?
We can send out a letter.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just don't want anyone to be blindsided one way or the other.
Thank you, Alderman Brasshaw.
Understandable.
Was that Alderman Mysick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so thank you, Alderperson Brasshaw. You asked the question I was thinking of. I had one additional. Uh, when restricting parking on east-west streets, is it typically that you restrict the parking on the south side of the street and allow parking on the north side? I can think of several cases where that is the case. Is that the standard practice?
That's not always the case. Um, in these two cases, a lot of it depends on where driveways are located. If there's one side that has more driveways or less driveways. Trying to restrict the least amount of parking is normally what we try to do. Um, Coates, we restricted the parking based off where that low power line coming across the street was. Thank you.
Is there any other comments, counsel? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on passing of the ordinance 202027?
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
The ordinance has passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number eight is the adoption of Resolution 202029. Could you please read this?
Resolution of Support for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Grant for Downtown Revolving Loan Fund for Chicago Avenue Streetscape Accessibility. I believe that should be downtown, not Chicago Avenue. Sorry about that.
Director Zepkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution is related to the public hearing that we had earlier this evening. Uh, the city has $483,005.08 in Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund, or CDBG, RLF Program Credits with the state of Illinois. Uh, we are eligible to use these funds to perform infrastructure projects within the city, including on this project, which includes, which improves and makes accessible approximately 4,745 square feet of sidewalks and ramps in downtown Freeport and surrounding areas. Uh, the strategic plan alignment for this project, connected, accessible, and safe community. These accessibility improvements provide easier access to businesses and services in downtown Freeport and surrounding areas, to a wider range of individuals. Vibrant neighborhoods, these improvements will increase the attractiveness of sidewalks in the affected areas in response of efficient government. Utilizing grant funds to make these improvements is an efficient way to benefit accessibility for many residents and visitors to downtown Freeport and surrounding areas. Additionally, this project provides synergy with the planned Chicago Avenue accessibility and Streetscape project, which will also have accessible sidewalks. And we would ask for approval of this resolution of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, counsel?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Uh, could you reaffirm, what is the percentage that the city is matching on this?
Um, there is no match. Um, the project comes in at about $6,000 more than our credits, and that will be paid out of Fund 18, which is a Public Works account.
So about 1.4% of the overall cost will be out of city funds?
Yeah.
Any other questions, counsel?
Uh, Mayor, this is Bornhamon.
Alderman Bornhamon.
Does the city have an anticipated start date for this project?
Anticipated start date? Yes, if awarded, we would like to see this done in next construction season, 2021.
Anything else, counsel?
There needs to be a motion to approve this?
Yes.
I'd make that motion.
I'd second.
All right, we have a motion made by Alderman Bornhamon, seconded by Alderman McLanathan for the adoption of Resolution 202029. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the reports of department heads. Finance.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I just wanted to report one thing, that we received the draft financial audit just this past Friday, and Randy and I will be reviewing that here this week so we can wrap things up on the last fiscal year.
Good, thank you very much. Community development.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Uh, wanted to let you and council know, we received the draft comprehensive plan Friday afternoon from Ratio. Uh, Manager Bukas and I have begun to review it. It's approximately 135 pages in length. Thank you very much.
I'm glad that's your job to review. And Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wanted to let council know that they have finally opened up the asphalt plans. Um, we will be paving here in the next few weeks. Um, we're trying to finish up the last of the city stumps that are out there. Uh, we only have a handful or two left. Once those stumps are done, then we'll pick up the grinding, um, and then we'll be paving after that.
Okay, thank you very much. Fire Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just want to report out that this week is National Emergency Medical Services Week. So, uh, if I could give a shout out to all of our firefighter, paramedics, and EMTs on the department. Everyone in the department serves an EMS role of some sort, whether they are a firefighter or paramedic. Uh, many of our current EMTs served as a paramedic at some point in time during their career. Uh, we respond to well over 5,000 emergencies every year. Uh, the great majority of those are emergency medical services, and, uh, the service we provide definitely impacts the quality of life in our beautiful community. So I want to give my thanks to all of our fire medics for that. Um, reporting out a little bit, uh, we do have our Second Lucas device in, and it is operational on the street. I had hoped to have the whole program built out by this week. Um, but obviously with the COVID, uh, we haven't been able to get as much fundraising, uh, out there as we needed to get the other two devices. So we'll continue to work on that with Freeport Community Foundation and, uh, that we appreciate their partnership. Uh, also, I'm sure you're aware, we had a fire on Highland, uh, this last week. A pretty severe fire. The, uh, uh, fire was caused by the back feed of electricity into the home from a downed power line. Uh, we did discover, uh, in conversation with neighbors, there was another house that was also affected, so we're very lucky. We didn't have two house fires at the same time. Uh, the, uh, I'm very proud of our crews. We've had several pretty critical emergencies lately, and they performed exceptionally well. And I want to give them all the praise for their hard work, and then also the assistance of our neighbors on the Two Eagles fire. Um, with that said, everything else is in good order, and we appreciate the support of the council and the city manager.
Thank you very much. Police Department.
Uh, the only thing I have to report is that the, uh, we're going down Wednesday to pick up the, uh, the new squad car. Um, there was a hiccup last week where we couldn't get down to get it, so, uh, the plan is to pick it up Wednesday and have it back there. We already have some of the major components that need to go into it back here, so.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. What I'd like to report this evening is that, uh, people, uh, the residents have seen some work taking place over at Galena and Float Street. What that is, is that the contractor is tying in phase one and phase two. I expect that to be done by the end of next week. They will demobilize, so then the contractor that's going to put down the asphalt will go and pave from that intersection at Galena at Float all the way to Float at Adams, and that will close out that project.
Okay, thank you very much. IT. Nothing from IT. How about library?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. We, I just wanted to do a quick report that our curbside pickup is going really well. Last week, we had 995 transactions. That includes, uh, people coming to check stuff out and then also, um, dropping stuff off in our book drop. So it's been successful, and we had rave reviews, so, um, that's about it. Thank you.
That's awesome to hear. Thank you. Assistant to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Um, our, so the weekly response rate right now is, um, at, for the census, is at 66.6%. Um, on average, 46% of, um, the residents who have responded have responded by internet. Um, and so this week, uh, just today, we're sending out 7,458, um, every-door direct mailing with instructions on how to complete the census, um, just to try and reach some people who may not have internet and remind them that they can respond via phone, or, um, they should expect to get a mailer, um, or a paper questionnaire to fill out and mails haven't already gotten that.
What did you say our percentage was at the very start?
66.6.
Thank you. And I don't believe, I don't believe Airport has connected on, have they?
No.
Nope. All right, city manager report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, over the weekend, I had an opportunity to talk to State Senator Brian Stewart. As many of you know, the General Assembly's been called back into session to deal with a number of issues, one of which is the state budget. Uh, Senator Stewart and I were talking about possible projects here in Freeport that we might want to have the state help us fund. Including that, uh, request I made to him was the Chicago Avenue Streetscape Accessibility Project, which is in the Illinois enter-opportunity zone, which would include sidewalk repair and, uh, street reconstruction, utility upgrades, and new lighting with an estimated cost of about $3.9 million. Uh, this project was picked because the governor's looking for projects that will, uh, create immediate jobs in the construction field, which this will do. We're almost, we can really move this forward if we need to. Plus, the long-term effect is that it will strengthen our downtown businesses and hopefully, uh, keep in and even increase jobs there. The second project I recommended to him was, uh, Empire Street from Quanis Drive to South Arlington. This would be street repairs, uh, utility upgrades, and, you know, extending the multi-use path and ADA work as well. And that construction estimate is $5.5 million. The third project I recommended to Senator Stewart was our waterman improvements. So basically, our phase-two projects that were Basically, our phase-two projects that we're doing right now, that we're getting ready to start, these are construction-ready to go. I mean, that's construction-ready, but they're shovel-ready to go. And this is an estimated $2.8 million. And then the fourth project I recommended to him, if you could get funded, if we can't get the other three funded, would be our citywide street improvement program at $1.5 million. This would be to repair and overlay a number of streets that are within the city limits. The other item I have, Your Honor, is that I'm looking at a committee of a whole meeting on June 8th. We've skipped last two because of lack of necessary items to discuss. But we will have the audit. Hopefully, we haven't gotten back with, or, excuse me, the auditors haven't gotten back to us whether that's available time for them, so that would probably be the big and the main focus of that meeting. As well as, on Friday, we received the art museum facility study. Again, another big project, so. Yes, doing a lot of reading this week. And so that would be on the agenda as well. And that's what I have tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things from my report. Last week, actually, May 15th, we observed Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week. So we would like to thank our Freeport Police, as well as our Stevenson County Sheriff's Office, for all the work that they do in serving this community. Last week was also National Nurses Week, so to all of our nurses in the community, from our elder care facilities, to the hospitals, to the clinics, and more. We appreciate all that they do, and so these truly are some great heroes within our community. I would also like to just read a portion of the article I'd written for Sunday's paper, just to help bring some clarity. "I believe that all of our businesses are essential, just like all of our people matter. The data in our community concerning COVID has been within the guidelines that the governor has placed in Illinois for reopening: add or below the 20% positivity rate, no overall increase in hospital admissions, a 14% surge capacity of ICU beds and ventilators, and no more than 10 percentage points increase over 14 days. Even with the region that Freeport has been placed in, north-central, we meet these requirements to move into phase three. This recovery phase says that manufacturing, offices, retail, barber shops, and salons can open on June 1st to the public with limited capacity of seating and safety precautions. I hear the cries of our local businesses on a daily basis and their struggles with the current situations, especially those under the heading of phase four and phase five. My heart breaks for many of you as I understand what it's like to meet the needs of payroll, insurance, and rent, just to name a few of the obligations of running a business. I cannot in good conscience direct you to break the law, even though there is uncertainty as to whether the executive orders issued are legally enforceable at this time. The city is aware of the favorable business climate in our neighboring states of Iowa and Wisconsin, and we anticipate that some businesses will and have already decided to reopen, regardless of what the governor authorizes of those to reopen. The city makes no determination as to whether or not any business should or can open. What I can say is, please contact your attorney for advice prior to doing so, especially if your business is tied to a state license. Every business owner by nature is a risk taker, and putting your license at jeopardy is definitely a risk. Please, in the best advice of the public health of the citizens of Freeport, practice the measures put forth by the Health Department. With face coverings where six-foot distancing cannot be obtained, wash your hands and sanitize surfaces." So if you'd like to see what the rest of that article entails, you're welcome to look at the website to see what that all is. So, that's the remainder, that's the conclusion of my report. So, if Alderman Busker, would you like to start with new business?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Brashaw?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the fire chief and his department for their quick work and service to Highland Drive. The house fire that happened there was, what I understand, a very electrifying experience to all of our firemen. It was a very dangerous atmosphere for them to fight fire in, and I'm thankful there were no injuries and that the occupant was exited safely. I also want to thank our IT director, Kurt Sutman, for setting up these meetings. They are not always easy for all of us to understand. We have to listen very carefully, but he walks us through the process to make our jobs just a little bit easier, and I'm very thankful for him. So, thank you again, Kurt Sutman. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Brashaw. Alderman Mysek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to also say a thank you to our first responders, fire and police. And really, all of you guys are doing an amazing job. I know we're in some very trying times, and it's one of those areas you may not be receiving quite enough thanks for how you are serving in our community. And I'd also like to thank nurses, doctors, all healthcare workers right now. It's a matter of serving in your role and not being in fear, but simply understanding you have an opportunity to serve. So I thank you for your service in that. And really, for residents, is to choose to be honoring, brave, respectful, to be in contact with those who are unable to get out, such as nursing home residents, and most of all, be kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burberry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your putting into the record the part of your article you just read. It was a very good column. It considers the situation of our small businesses. It also takes into effect some of the issues that affect our community. And your advice and direction to individuals and businesses to seek correct counsel from their professions. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Bornhamon?
Well, in response to the public comment that was concerned that the committee short-circuited the hiring process, I just wanted to say that I always appreciate it when someone's willing to take the time, to care enough to provide a public comment, but am I coming across okay over there?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to say, the search committee hired a very qualified and experienced person in Director Bukas, someone who knows the city, and more importantly, knows the city's finances probably better than anybody on the planet. Maybe his deputy finance director may disagree with me, but between those two, no one knows our finances better. He has a good relationship with the department heads. He impressed the committee with his interview and his performance on the job over the last couple of years here. So, and also, as a committee to not consider COVID-19 and the things the city's going through would have been irresponsible of us. To bring in, spend the $30,000 or whatever it would have been, somewhere around that much, to bring in a search committee, to bring in other individuals who aren't going to know the city as well and maybe just as qualified as the city manager. So I think it was something we had to consider, and stability during this unprecedented time is very important for a government like this. And we hired someone who is, like I said, qualified, experienced, great at his job, and I stand by that decision. And like I said, to not consider the chaos of COVID-19 in their hiring decision would have been irresponsible. So, I stand by the decision, and I'll end my comment at that.
Thank you, Alderman Bornhamon. Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. I'll reserve my comments for when we're discussing the ordinance.
Thank you. Alderman Ross?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
I just wanted to echo what Alderman Bornhamon just said. Took a lot of words I don't have to say now, so. But it's definitely a win-win, and we're very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13 is public comments. Madam Clerk, is there any public comments at this time?
No.
Then, item number 14 is the executive session. Could you please read this?
Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees for the public body. And I believe we don't need exemption 11?
Okay, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved. Second. Mysek.
Mysek and Burberry.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Mysek, seconded by Alderman Burberry, to enter into executive session. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Parker?
Yes.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Mysek?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Bornhamon?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.